It's seven o'clock on the 11th of January 2021, and I'd like to call the council meeting to order.
All right, let me start with the roll call.
Yes, please.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Here. Oh, participating from South Lansing, Michigan.
Councilmember Betts.
Present, participating remotely from Lansing, Michigan.
Councilmember Garza.
I am present, participating remotely from South Lansing.
Councilmember Hussein.
Present, participating proudly from South Lansing.
Councilmember Jackson.
Present, participating remotely from the Lansing, Michigan.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Present, participating remotely from Lansing, Michigan, down the street from Brian and Kathy in the Lansing, Michigan.
Councilmember Wood.
Present and participating remotely from Lansing, Michigan on the west side.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Present, late, sorry, participating remotely from the south side of Lansing, Michigan.
We're next to meditation, pledge of allegiance.
Thank you. Is there anybody that folks wish that we would keep in our thoughts during our meditation this evening? Councilmember Wood.
Thank you, President Spatafor. I think reflecting back on what this nation has been through in this past week, I think we need to remember those that have lost their lives as part of the insurrection on the Capitol for us as a nation and for us to remember those that have served our country and have fought wars for us to have the freedom to have the elections that we've had, whether you appreciate the way they've turned out or not, that we still have a democracy to defend. So if we could keep people in our prayers, I would appreciate that. Thank you.
You can councilmember Wood. Councilmember Dunbar.
Thank you. I would just like to have everybody keep Father Bill Luger in their thoughts. He is, he's going through dialysis like every day of the week, and he has a disease that only 600 people in the world have been diagnosed with in the last hundred years. It's a very strange, strange situation he's got going on. And I went to visit him this weekend, and he could, he could use some good vibes, good juju and prayers.
Thank you very much, both of you. For those, I will ask that you all please join me in a moment of meditation. Thank you. Pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for I, all year, I've been terrified of doing that. All right, let me start over. I apologize. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. One nation. I can't do it. Carol, you're gonna do it tonight. Yes, I am so sorry, folks. I'm having a mental problem this evening. I apologize. Carol, or Vice President Hussein, whoever.
Let your Vice President do it.
Mr. Vice President, I apologize, folks.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for, oh my God, you got me messed up now. And Councilmember Garza, go ahead.
For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I was only hearing your voice after, after I took over.
I want to apologize. Thank you all. It's been a year, and I haven't done that yet. So I apologize for that. I will have it in front of me next week. My gosh. Okay, we have that taken care of. After Carol just talked about the Republican democracy, I couldn't remember the words. My apologies. All right, moving on to the clerk.
Okay, we do not have any printed council proceedings for this evening, so we do not have any late items, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so then we're to comments by council members and the city clerk.
I will start with Councilmember Spitzley, because I saw her hand first.
I just wanted to, and I'm pretty sure that Councilmember Garza and Hussein are gonna say the same thing, but I beat you to it. I just wanted to announce the opening of 517, the 517 Coffee Company, 6030 South Martin Luther King Boulevard in the former Bakes and Cakes. People, you gotta go. In addition to having these cinnamon rolls with cream cheese on them to die for. They have great coffee, great coffee varieties. It's homegrown, the best of Lansing. And so if you get a chance, they're open at from 7:30 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. Go and get a great cup of coffee and some pastry.
Thank you, Councilmember Spitzley. I see Councilmember Hussein.
You did beat me to it, Councilwoman Spitzley. I certainly wanted to announce that. I cannot tell you how excited I am that 517 has opened up. That's actually the, and I think you may have said it, the former site of Bacon Cakes South. And so to react, activate that location with, you know, with 517 has just been amazing. You know, we were really obviously concerned over in southwest Lansing when that, when Bacon Cakes South closed. And you know, our city's administration along with LEAP worked, you know, hand in hand with Jeff Johnson, who is the owner of Bacon Cakes, as well as the folks over at 517, to get them over into that location. And it, I think it's a perfect marriage. So we're really, really excited. And, and you know, I think we'd be remiss if we didn't talk a little bit just about the ownership. You know, 517, the folks over there, they are incredible. I mean, they truly are advocates of, of all things Lansing. And they support our local businesses. They support our nonprofits. They've been involved with a number of our festivals. As a matter of fact, they've been involved with both Lansing Harmonies that we've actually had over at Ben Davis and South Lansing. So I would just implore folks to get out and to support them and that investment that they made in our community. I also want to shout out 1910 Food Market at the corner of Pleasant Grove and Homes. Rayvon Herphy, who was the owner of 1910, he's also the former president of the Southwest Action Group. He's a board member of the Southwest Action Group. He's worked really, I mean, just tirelessly, I think, over the past few years, really to breathe new life into, into that store. He actually partnered with the city on a complete exterior makeover that was completed over a year ago. And I got a couple of calls, believe it or not, earlier today, some folks that were concerned 1910 was closed. And you know, I think because of, you know, kind of pandemic related closings, you know, people, you know, had this fear, you know, are they closed? And are they going to be closed in perpetuity? So I did reach out to Rayvon and found out that they were actually laying new floor inside. So there's actually a plan to completely make over the interior of his store. And so, so what you have essentially are two businesses, when we talk about 517 and you talk about 1910, that are, you know, during some really challenging times, making some incredible investments in our community. And so I certainly hope that folks get out and support those businesses, along with all the, you know, the other great businesses throughout our community. And the last comment is really, you know, for the mayor, I'm hoping that the mayor can provide an update on Porter Senior Apartments that can, you know, either be, you know, part of his comments today, or maybe as part of our meeting on the 25th. As most are aware, we were asked in June to support a 40-year, 5% pilot for this property, which would have been an extension of a pilot currently in place. I think the current pilot expires sometime in 2022. Many, many issues at Porter were discussed throughout the process, and we ultimately voted the pilot down, as we didn't want to reward bad behavior. More importantly, we did ask the administration to continue to hold these folks accountable and to work to ensure that some very vulnerable individuals, our neighbors, our brothers, our sisters over there, living in those units, that they, you know, had essentially a safe and appropriate place to call home. At the time, I, along with a few other council members, we referenced rats, we referenced bedbugs, broken trash chutes that required some people, many that are physically disabled, to descend staircases, because they were also having issues with their elevators at the time. We talked about deferred maintenance. We talked about broken windows. The list goes on. But some of these complaints came from residents, some came from first responders. We were able to confirm some of these on-site visits. A number of us, obviously, as part of council, went over there and visited. And then there was also some photographic evidence that had been provided. In any event, my understanding is that we have received renewed complaints. And so for that reason, I really am asking for an update from our city's administration as to where we are at with this property and ensuring that, again, our folks, our neighbors over there have a safe and appropriate place to live. Thank you.
And President Spatafor, really quick, I'd just like to echo that. I'm also hearing complaints. It's, you know, it's unfortunate, because I know that, you know, with Councilmember Wood and Councilman Hussein, you know, we, you know, particularly Councilmember Wood tried to get in to have meetings with the former owners. I'm understanding that the property was up for sale, and it may have been sold. But in the meantime, these residents have fallen between the cracks. And, you know, I've seen pictures of horrific bedbug bites. I've seen pictures of rats. I drive by there just out of curiosity a number of times, and windows are broken out of. This summer, when I was there and I was going through there, there was no air conditioning. The residents have to purchase their own air conditioners. You know, and the elevator was broken. And so, you know, we can't control who purchases the building or who sells it to it, but we can certainly control the quality of life for those residents, many who are seniors and some folks who are mentally challenged. And so I am too going to urge, and thank you, Councilmember Hussein, for saying that. And I apologize for taking your thunder on 517 Coffee, but I'm also gonna urge that we, we look at that. That has been a building problem for years and years and years, and they seem to do just enough to get into compliance so that we'll turn our heads and go on to something else, and then they, they go back to their bad behavior. And we just can't allow that to continue. Thank you. And I thank you for letting me interrupt.
I didn't realize we had a choice in that matter, Councilmember Spitzley. Councilmember Hussein, are you finished with your announcements?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I kid Patricia, but seriously, Councilmember Wood, it's your turn now.
Thank you. I want to thank and echo the same concerns that Councilmember Spitzley and Councilmember Hussein have on the Porter Apartments. But I also want to announce, and I'm sure that President Spatafor was going to, so I'm gonna steal his thunder, of the special committee of a whole meeting on the proposed Parks and Recreation five-year plan. That is going to be on Wednesday, the 20th, from 6:00 to 7:30. It is on a Zoom meeting. We have that posted on our website, along with the link to the plan, so that people have a chance to look at that as well. I know that I posted this on a number of neighborhood groups, have received a number of replies of things that people would like to see as part of the Parks Plan, and will make sure that I bring those forward the night of that meeting, so that their voices are heard with that. And there is the opportunity to, if you're not able to be on the Zoom meeting, to also give us feedback on that. And then, of course, tonight, we're having the public hearing on the Parks Plan. So if people are still listening that would like to join and make public comment on the Parks Plan, they can do that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wood. I just checked that off my list. Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you. Just a few things. The first thing I thought about during the other comments about the Porter, I would like to echo those, but also remind everybody that we did have a chance to address at least some of those issues when the, when the pilot came up that was voted down by majority. I did support it mainly for the fact that it would ultimately help some of our people living there. But it would have taken care of a few of those things. And maybe as a, something that the administration can do is maybe try to reengage and renegotiate to councils' likings, maybe another pilot that's a little more friendly or whatever it would take to get it passed, because that's one way that we can help by approving that. And the second thing is, just trying to think of ways to connect with people, I just wanna invite anybody who would like to receive a newsletter with council updates and some of my thoughts to email me at bryantj.jackson@lansingmi.gov. The idea is just to stay connected, share some ideas, get some responses, and hopefully eventually it turns from vanilla to a little spicy with some ideas and some, some thoughts and some opinions that come back and forth. So I look forward to that, and I will add you to the list if you send me an email. Thank you.
Well, if there's a promise of spice, Councilmember Jackson, I'll be sending you my email address very soon. So the next item is a council member, or comments from the city clerk. Mr. Jackson is filling in for Mr. Swope this evening. Mr. Clark, do you have any comments this evening? Oh, you're muted, Brian. If you want to speak, though, you have to say the pledge of allegiance first.
I was mouthing the words along, so.
Okay, very good.
Didn't want to throw you off. And just to reiterate, Councilmember Jackson's email is bryantj.jackson. You see his comment. Mine email is a little bit different. I will certainly forward any emails for me for looking for spicy newsletters, knowing that they're looking for the council members.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr.
Glad I could be here. And I just wanted to pass on an update from the clerk's office. As a final step in review of the presidential election, we'll be joining clerks across Michigan in completing a risk-limiting audit on January 21st at the South Washington Election Unit. A risk-limiting audit is a comprehensive post-election audit, which uses statistical methods to confirm whether reported election results are correct and detect possible anomalies. This type of audit is considered the gold standard in post-election audits, and the city of Lansing piloted this and been doing this since 2018. We're gonna start at 9:00 a.m. at the South Washington Election Unit. That's 2500 South Washington in the back of the building. The public is welcome to observe if they will, they have to wear a mask and follow social distancing protocols, and they can contact our office for more details. And with that, then I think we're on to community event announcements.
Are there any, oh, that's you. If there are community event announcements, you have a minute to announce them. Please raise your hand as you would for public comment.
I don't see the participation, so I'm, any hands? Okay, now I can see it. I see we don't have any, doesn't look like we have any.
All right, moving on.
Then we be moving on to speaker registration for public comment on legislative matters. If you want to speak on any of the eight public hearings or any items up for consideration or legislation, you need to raise your hand at the end of the first speaker's comment period. In the raise your hand, you need to dial nine if you're on the phone. Click the raise hand icon in the chat room, press Alt-Y key at the same time for Windows and, or Option-Y if you're an Apple computer. So we can start signing up for public comment just on legislative matters at this time, and then we're on to the mayor's comments.
Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a variety of things. I'll, first I'll share with the folks who mentioned 517 Coffee. I was there this morning. Place is awesome. And thank you to the very nice person who bought coffee for everybody that was there that morning. I missed it, so I paid my own. But apparently a gentleman came in and bought coffee for everyone who was there this morning. So very exciting in the southwest part of town. Remind everybody that that was one of our facade improvement projects. So it's great to see that, that facility occupied. What else? I want to thank our, our parking employees that helped with COVID vaccine distribution last week. The call went out, and we answered the call. We were able to have employees go and assist with COVID vaccination. So thank you to our city employees for, for doing that. I issued an executive order this morning that was forwarded to council this morning, or yes, this morning, that our buildings will remain closed to the public. Clearly, we're gonna continue to keep our employees and public safe until we've got an efficient vaccine and until we can have people safely in our buildings. I know you've got on your agenda the extension of the emergency. So we'll just continue that. The original executive order was scheduled to expire, so we've just extended that. Our neighborhood grants applications are due February 1st, so please share with your neighborhood groups that the applications will be due. And we're looking forward to neighborhood projects. We did, we have gotten several questions about if those can be used for COVID-related projects. And the answer, of course, is yes. Any activities and things that can help as we try and navigate COVID in the winter, we're certainly eligible. This Friday will be our HRCS Martin Luther King event at noon, the annual event, which has been in city council chambers previously, will now be virtual. So that will be this Friday at noon. Additionally, don't forget on Monday, our annual Martin Luther King Holiday Commission has their event, which again is virtual. I believe it's 7:00 p.m. on WILX. It's gonna be a, I think it's gonna be an hour program. So with Martin Luther King Junior Day on Monday, we want to remember to honor him and his legacy. And so the events will continue, even though we'll do it safely with COVID. I wanted to just inform everybody, let everybody know clearly, Councilman Wood mentioned the, the crisis in our country. The next nine days are gonna be busy and crazy until inauguration. We are expecting Lansing as a capital city to be one of the armed protest cities this Sunday. So we, we will certainly work with MS Michigan State Police to ensure that people can protest, but they do it peacefully. And we are, are gonna be monitoring that, but just so everyone knows, that's coming this Sunday. And then there's discussion of potential protests around inauguration day. And again, we will be monitoring that and tracking that. So just so everybody knows. And finally, I know there were some questions about the Porter. So I'm happy to have Brian McGrane come in. Our staff has been there repeatedly and often. Our code enforcement staff has done incredible work answering and getting there and addressing anything that violates code. I know that, that we've cited them as things have not been up to code. They've gotten a lot of calls. It's an older building, and when things happen, our employees go and they check out the complaints. I know there are questions about, you know, bedbugs, and somebody mentioned air conditioning, you know, stuff like that is not within our code. It's actually public health, although bedbugs are not actually a public health nuisance, which may surprise you. But I learned that when I was in the legislature, I did a bill on bedbugs, allowing for, for tenants to use bedbugs as a public health nuisance. And the bill didn't actually pass. And just about any time you talk about bedbugs, people start scratching. But, so bedbugs are a different issue, but for us, anything that, any code compliance complaints that we get, our folks are there. They're there often. When they get called, they're making sure that the facility's up to code. Again, I'm happy to have Brian McGrane or Steve Swan or any of our code folks provide the timelines of when our folks have been there. But our folks have been there often, and it's certainly a building. That's, that's something that we respond to. And that's their job, and that's what they do. I think Councilman Jackson mentioned the pilot. In terms of the pilot, really, it'd have to make the numbers work. So I'm not sure what the renegotiation would be, and I know it's based on tax credits and things like that. So, you know, it was defeated pretty handily. I think it was defeated 6:02 here at council. So at this point, we're going to assume the council is not interested in the pilot unless there are some conditions that, that you like to look at, and we're happy to look at those. But outside of that, I'm not sure what numbers make it work. So that's what I know about the, the Porter. And again, I'm happy to have Brian McGrane come in or provide kind of a timeline of our responses to any of the complaints that we've received, which, again, we should be able to generate. I think that's all I've got. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We are Mr. Clark.
Okay, so.
I know it's only been a couple of weeks, but it feels like it's the first time I've ever done this, so let's.
The agenda looks different, too. We did that just to keep you on your toes.
Thank you.
So we're on to public comment, legislative matters. Again, wishing to make a public comment, need to raise your hand by the end of the first speaker's comments, which looks like it's Loretta Stanaway. Again, to raise your hand function, dial nine, star nine on the phone, click the raise hand icon in the chat room, press Alt-Y for Windows, Option-Y for Apple Computer. By first, we'll read into the record all nine public hearings. Public hearing, consideration of ordinance to amend Chapter 240 to restructure the grant awarding process for basic human services. And we have an ordinance to amend Chapter 1279 Appendix D of the zoning ordinance, expand the West Saginaw Street overlay district. See, we have the Parks and Rec Draft Master Plan. DSLU 42020, special land use permit for 900 Southland Avenue, Suite 910, to allow a church in the F Commercial District. We have then Z42020 at 220 North Pennsylvania, rezoning from C Presidential District to DM4 District. And we have Z52020 at the northeast corner of East Miller and Orchard Court. That's a rezoning of F Commercial to DM3 Residential. And we have Z62020 for, for properties on North Grand Avenue, rezoning from F Commercial, J Parking, A Residential, D1 Professional, and G2 Wholesale District to H Light Industrial District. And we have Z72020 of 500 North Cedar Street and 514 Erie Street, a rezoning from H Light Industrial, G1 Business District. And last, Z82020, 2918 Northeast Street, as the rezoning from F Commercial District to H Light Industrial District.
Is that it?
That is it.
All right.
So your first speaker is Loretta Stanaway. Whenever you want to speak, Loretta, I believe you're unmuted.
Okay, first thing would be to lend my support once again to the pilot for the Walter French Building to be converted into senior and low-income housing. I give that my complete support. And then I wanted to address the Parks and Rec Master Plan and remind, I think most of the council members know that the Friends of Lansing's Historic Cemeteries has worked with the council and the city Parks and Rec Department over the last several years to implement some changes which have effectively reduced the general fund subsidy for the Parks and Rec Department relating to the cemeteries between the creation of the Frater Memorial Garden and the installation of the columbarium walls there. That has been very successful. They are on their third columbarium wall. And in Evergreen, Section P was opened, and that is selling quite rapidly as well. So we have contributed in a significant way to the reduction of the general fund subsidy for the cemeteries in the Parks and Rec budget. And also, we have opened as volunteers the Cemetery Courtesy Office in conjunction and cooperation with the city in a public-private partnership. And this has been very successful as well, significantly enough that the city has offered a two-year renewal on that agreement, which we are in the process of signing. That is it. Thank you.
Next, we have Raleigh Van Fossen, who would then be followed up by Charles Ford.
Thank you. I hope you can hear me. Thank you, Council President Spatafor and Clerk Swope and the rest of council. I'm Raleigh Van Fossen. I'm a resident of the city of Lansing over at 1018 North Genison, and also speaking tonight as the Executive Director of Capital Area Housing Partnership. You have on your agenda tonight an ordinance for passage, the Walter French Apartments Pilot, as the previous speaker just mentioned. And I'm here again to ask for your support for this. I listened to Committee of the Whole Meeting just an hour or so before this, when we spoke about folks and living in the back 40, and certainly our most vulnerable population. And, you know, want to remind that the support of the city of Lansing and City Council tonight for funding of this historic building would create 76 affordable apartment units, one, two, and three-bedroom for Lansing residents. And out of those 76 units, a significant portion of them set aside for what we refer to in our world, permanent supportive housing. And those are units targeted at the most vulnerable. So not only do they receive a warm place to call home every night, they receive the necessary rent assistance, but most importantly, they receive the supportive services from Advent House Ministries and Community Mental Health to be successful in their housing endeavors moving forward. And so I know I'm available for questions here tonight if they exist, but would for a final time, ask for Lansing Council's support of the Walter French redevelopment. Thank you.
Okay, next is Charles Ford, followed by Propagandie.
Sorry about that. I had to unmute. Thank you, President Spatafor, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Shore, and the rest of the council members. I'm here to speak on Z 8 2020, and that's the property located at 2918 Northeast Street for for rezoning from F Commercial to H Light Industrial. I am representing GDN Farms LLC, also owned by Jermaine Redding. This was presented to the planning board on November 17, 2020. It was approved to be rezoned from F 1 Commercial to HD Light Industrial to allow for a marijuana grow. It was approved by the planning board, just to give you some of the the things that took place and making your decision. We did show some before and after pictures to put the building before was really in kind of deplorable condition. My client has renovated that building and looks very nice. It's it's located along Northeast Street and it's visible from the roadway. And we've had a number of people. We had one person that came on and spoke at the planning board meeting that says that it's a very nice addition to that particular neighborhood. There is another grow facility, probably just probably feet. We did show pictures that another grow facility was very close to my client's building as well. And so we thought that thought that would also ease the situation where you do have another gross facility in that particular vicinity. My client is licensed by the state to be a caregiver and to grow for the use of his clients that he is giving, that he's a caregiver for. So we just asked that the council go along with the planning board and approve the rezoning of 23 28 17, I think you get the right address, 2918 Northeast Street from F 1 Commercial to H Light Industrial for the use of a marijuana grow. And I'd be available for any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then we have Propagandie followed by Edmund Rushton.
Hello, thank you for your time. Can you all hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
So first of all, I always find it hard to ever comment on this public legislation because you guys don't really be talking about nothing on this agenda. So we need to work on that in 2021. The last, the last comments by the mayor was probably the best that I've heard up to this point, given that you self censored yourself throughout the whole thing. So I appreciate you for that, Andy Shore. Outside of that, in consideration of the ordinance to amend chapter 240, I've read through most of that. And the one part that really disturbs me is giving this mayor any more power over funds for the less fortunate. We already know how that will turn out. We know that it'll be campaign money, basically giving money off to neighborhoods and so on and so forth to make people happy rather than really actually helping people. So I'm completely against that language being in this ordinance change. Outside of that, we got to get something on this legislative agenda that really directs help to the citizens of the city. I think we're all tired of only hearing rezoning plans and all of the BS when this world is literally on fire, our city included, to have no plan or talk about what's coming in the first, the coming up week. And so when we talk about legislation and whether or not we're speaking on this legislation, I'm going to speak on what's absent from this agenda and what's absent from every single agenda that we've come upon. And and the aspects that we don't talk about and that aren't being heard, the Porter Building and the in the situations there only being brought up today because the Poor People's Campaign ran a protest, and America 20 to Life ran a show on it, is really deplorable. The City Council waits on us to speak on what's important. Although we're speaking to you guys on a daily, so the people are asking for what they're asking for. And I think we're getting pretty, pretty tired and fed up. And I think your guys' inaction on all these legislative matters throughout last year and this year to continue will definitely be brought up and talked about in your guys' campaign bids. So thank you for your time. I'll speak again on other issues in the later time.
Thank you. We have Edmund Rushton, and the last speaker is has an area code of 248 and last three digits of 753. But Edmund, you're up now.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Fantastic. So I am calling in today because it is now 2021. And obviously, we're all very shaken by what we've seen from violent white supremacist groups in this country. And we're considerably worried in this city about.
Sir, I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt. Is this on a legislative matter? If not, there's another chance for public comment at the end of the meeting. But if it's not one of the items.
Yes, that is actually the public comment that I wanted to be added.
Okay.
I thought that was this portion.
No, I'm sorry. That it gets confusing. We'll, we'll, we'll get you back at the end, though.
Fantastic, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay, and did our last speaker is with the 248? Is he still there? Did they change their name to Pete?
Yeah. Hi, this is Pete Schwiggerott with MVH Partner. You hear me okay there?
Yes.
Hi. Yeah, again, Pete Schwiggerott with MVH Partners, just here on behalf of item H under your public hearings, the rezoning of property at Cedar and Erie Street. It is our intent to develop a multi generational affordable housing campus on that site in partnership with the Lansing Housing Authority. We just wanted you to know that we're here and available for your comments and questions if you if and as you have them as the public hearing occurs. Thank you for your considerations tonight. Let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you.
That concludes the public comment period. Is there any overview or are we going right to the referrals of the public hearings?
We'll go right to the referrals.
Okay. Do I just use the letters or do you want me to read it off?
You can read them just for the record, so folks know what's happening.
Okay. So we have the ordinance to amend chapter 240.
That is going to go back to the committee of the whole.
We have the ordinance to amend chapter 1279 Appendix D.
That's going back to the Committee on Development and Planning.
We have the Parks and Recreational Draft Master Plan.
Committee of the whole.
We have SLU 4 2020.
That is going to the Committee of Development and Planning.
You have Z 4 2020.
Committee on Development and Planning.
We have Z 5 2020.
Committee on Development and Planning.
We have Z 6 2020.
Committee on Development and Planning.
Z 7 2020.
Committee on Development and Planning.
And Z 8 2020.
Committee on Development and Planning. And Mr. Clerk, I made an error there. A should go back to General Services. Or I'm sorry, General Services, and we'll deal with the names of the committees in two weeks.
Right, yeah. I don't think we can change the names until after the vote. So we're going to call the old committees.
General Services.
Yeah. And all right. So then we're next onto order for passage, ordinance for passage.
Yes. Councilmember Spitzley, we have a pilot for Walter French Apartments.
And I need to adapt to the record if you want me.
Yeah, go for it, Brian, sorry.
That was kind of thought, we'll just kind of keep talking and stop, and then you can.
Go ahead.
From there. So read ordinance introduction to amend the Code of Ordinance of St. Lansing by adding new section 888.32 for purpose of providing for service charge in lieu of taxes for 76 low income multifamily dwellings in a project known as Walter French, pursuant to the provisions of the State Housing Development Authority Act 1966 as amended.
Now I will call on Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Mr. President. As Deputy Clerk Jack mentioned, this ordinance for passage is a payment in lieu of taxes for the Walter French Apartments on 1900 South Cedar Street. The proposal is a 6% pilot for 20 years to redevelop that site into approximately 76 houses, workforce, affordable housing. The pilot will just cover the apartments and the housing that's supposed to be there, the 76. It won't cover any commercial or or the gym or auditorium portion. It will just cover the the housing portion. And again, it's a 6% pilot for 20 years. And and just, just really quick editorial wise, you know, a pilot that's entered in between, you know, the City of Lansing and a developer is really an agreement and a covenant that, you know, you're going to be using those funds and you're going to be a good steward of the property. And when you're not a good steward of the property for multiple, multiple years, like the Porter, it is hard then to re up a pilot, particularly when a landlord had over $250,000 in reserves and still did not do any needed repairs on the building to make the building habitable. And so when you break that covenant between the City of Lansing and a property owner, then you don't get a re up on a pilot, which had been the second time they tried to do it. Nevertheless, the Capital Area Housing Partnership and their partners are coming before us with a 6% pilot for 20 years for the 76 housing units at the Walter French, the previous Walter French High School. And with that, I'll move the move the ordinance for passage.
Thank you, Councilmember Spitzley. I do see Councilman Garza's hand up. Councilman Garza.
Thank you, Council President. I understand that the 6% pilot is only going to the actual 76 units. However, what's the plan for maintaining the gym or any other capital improvements?
Now, you know, Raleigh can jump in there, but it's my understanding that they're trying to look for partners for appropriate use for the gym. They're also trying to, you know, there will be some commercial, I think. But I think that they are still trying to think of a beneficial use. Raleigh, you, if you would like to mention, I.
Yeah, I pulled Raleigh in to speak. So Raleigh, if you want to say something, Mr. Van Fossen, go for it.
Thanks, Councilmember Garza, for the question and Councilmember Spitzley. I would add on to that, you are correct. Those would be two separate ownership entities. And so the structure of our commercial properties and how we manage those alongside of a residential is we make the same commitment as we do to our residential property in creating a reserve account that ensures that, you know, necessary upgrades and repairs to the commercial properties are maintained. But is it our, it is our anticipation that we will find a long term lease partner for those commercial properties. I know similar presentations at the committee level and council level indicated that we are working with the Lansing Board of Water and Light as expanded space and use for that commercial property. And so I think, you know, taking on a partner like that would give all of the confidence to us as an owner that the property would be in good financial hands should any issues come about with the condition of of the property.
All right. Sorry, sorry.
We'll have Jimmy's ring.
Is there, has there been any, other than the talking, has there been any contracts or any? If this is approved, you know, contingent of use, getting this property that the Board of Water and Light, in fact, is actually going to be a partner?
Sure. So we do have a commitment letter at this point, the the large, this gets back to, you know, the the financing structure of the 76 residential units, being that we are pursuing low income housing tax credits from the Michigan State Housing Development Authority. And so we have an application deadline of February 1, 2021, where we will be submitting the 76 unit financing. We are likely to hear back from Mishtha by July 2021. And at that point, if this project is selected as to be funded under that round, we will then be able to more formally move from a commitment letter phase with our commercial partners into more formal ownership and lease structures.
Great, thank you, I appreciate that.
Councilmember Hussein is next.
Sure. So I appreciate Councilwoman Spitzley's comments. Also appreciate the line of questioning from Councilman Garza. First, first a statement, and then maybe just kind of a general statement, and then maybe some thoughts about this particular request. I, you know, I want it to be known that I'm not a, I'm not a fan of concentration of poverty or concentrating poverty. I really believe that we should be exploring ways in the City of Lansing, really, really, the the region to to deconcentrate poverty, really move away from a kind of the failed model that was set back, you know, maybe in the in the 19th century, you know, where you end up with tenements and pitiful living conditions we've seen right here in Lansing. Obviously, what those, you know, living conditions, you know, result in, you think of the Porter, you think of Woodside Meadows in in my part of town. On the other end of this reality, unfortunately, so often is, you know, a for profit developer, a for profit management company that are really making, you know, just just a mint off off of the, again, the pitiful living conditions that they put forth in communities. A lot of times that, you know, are, you know, in in communities far from, right, where they're centrally located. So I, so I battled this. I battled with, you know, other proposals, tonight's agenda that could potentially, I think, exacerbate this concentration of poverty. That said, when considering the Capital Area Housing Partnership, they are a nonprofit. As you've heard a little bit about tonight, they have partnered with the likes of Sinar, Leap, Borderwater and Light Lansing Housing Commission, and even our local neighborhoods. They do engage in things such as financial literacy, housing counseling. They have do it yourself workshops, you know, and as part of this project, as you also heard earlier tonight, they're going to have dedicated supportive units. So they don't just provide housing. They really do work to make that, you know, make sure that people have safe and appropriate housing and that they're successful, you know, as as part of that housing. So, you know, I will, you know, ultimately support this. But I wanted, you know, and I talked a little bit about this as part of our public hearing, also as part of the meeting where we actually introduced and set this public hearing. But I do want it kind of recorded in the minutes that I expect our administration and future administrations to hold the Capitol, sorry, Capital Area Housing Partnership to their promise of providing safe and appropriate housing for their residents. Further, that the expectation, at least for me, will be that in in 20 years' time, you know, they're not looking for an extension of the 6% pilot in order for us to be able to, you know, provide public services and public safety to our citizens, not just at, you know, these these housing, you know, facilities or developments, but also really across the city. You know, we cannot extend these pilots in perpetuity. So, you know, and caps made promises, you know, and I want that to be on the record as well. They made promises to add to their repair and replacement reserves to make capital improvements, you know, throughout the 20 year period. I appreciate that they are putting, at least my understanding, they're putting their development fee into their repair and replacement reserve. I believe that the state requires $350 per unit per year. They are committing to $370 per unit per year, which I certainly appreciate. So again, I just, I want it in the minute that these conversations were had and that the expectation of this body, or at least of me, you know, is is basically the foregoing. So, but again, I will ultimately approve it. I wanted that to be stated on the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Councilmember Wood.
Thank you, President Spatafor. Just a couple of questions, and I appreciate the comments that Councilmember Hussein made and Councilmember Spitzley. I, too, have wrestled over the years with pilots and been adamant about not approving pilots when they can apply for them at 10%. But I think, you know, part of it is looking at the track record of the company that is before us. And Councilmember Hussein did hit on the reserve fund. If you could, Raleigh, go into a little bit more on that, the reserve fund and how you intend to make sure that the the development continues to improve or doesn't deteriorate as as people move in and out.
Sure. And appreciate the the comments, Councilmember Hussein, and certainly the questions, Councilmember Wood. You know, I I think Councilmember Hussein hit the nail on the head that when when we apply for low that when we apply for low-income housing tax credit, the state housing authority sets a bare minimum threshold of what is required of a developer to invest in what we refer to as a replacement reserve, meaning over years come, we know that appliances, we know that carpeting, we know that painting, all of those items will have to be upgraded well before even your 20-year pilot is elapsed. What happens at the time of development completion is we get what we refer to as a capital needs assessment or short CNA, and that capital needs assessment outlines the life of everything with inside that building over a 20-year period. At what point in the longevity of its placement will need to be readdressed? Whether that's, you know, carpeting at year seven or AC units at year 13. And then Mishtha requires the developer to put forward a financing plan that says you could fund that, assuming we give you no additional monies outside of that upfront investment. And that's where that initial $350 replacement reserve per unit requirement comes. As Councilmember Hussein noted, we've taken and gone above and beyond that. We've increased that by to up to $370 per unit, and we did so for two reasons. One, because of the building being on the National Historic Registry. By and large, of that designation alone, it's going to require a little bit of extra care than the average apartment building would be because of the historic integrity within the exterior and interior. But then, secondly, it goes to the nature of us as your local community housing development organization. You know, I mentioned at the previous public hearing that I'm governed by 15 board members who live right here in the community. Seven of my board members are City of Lansing residents. And so that when questions come about the conditions of our properties, the conditions of specific units, that you're not asking questions from a developer out in California to get onto a Zoom call or a developer from Ohio to get onto a Zoom call, you're asking your neighbors to come to the table and have a conversation about what that property looks like. And that's why we went above and beyond in our commitment for replacement reserve funding, because we know that this is properties within our own backyard. I live 10 minutes from this site. And so I want to assure just as much as you do as a city council person that those replacement reserves are there to replace and cover adequate funding should no additional money over these 20 years be brought to the property.
Could you also talk about the fact, because these are family units, play areas that in green space?
Sure. So if I don't have the site plan presentation to screen share tonight, but certainly was included in previous council packets. What sits out behind the Walter French Building, sort of off the corner of Mount Hope and Cedar, is two acres of green space that we acquired along with the initial acquisition of the school property in and of itself. And it's that green space that is going to create those opportunities for, you know, walking paths, a play area for children, seating areas and so forth, almost its own mini park within the city just for folks who live at the Walter French Building. If you drive down by Mount Hope right now, you'll see the original play area that the Charter School built right on Mount Hope. But it's areas like that, you know, as close to Mount Hope being as busy it can be, we will set behind the building, offset, allowing for a much safer environment for residents to enjoy some of that community amenity space in the exterior. But within the interior of the building, we will also have dedicated community space. We'll have a dedicated computer lab for residents who may or may not have the opportunity to have their own internet or have their own technology within their apartment. They can go down to the first floor and utilize the community room, the community computer lab. There will be a fitness center as well as private meeting rooms should they want to have any outside groups come in and host any meetings on their own.
And just two more quick questions. One has to do with, in the green space, are you thinking anything about having a community garden?
Sure. You know, I think those are conversations that once funding is awarded, we will be able to dive much deeper into what the actual site plan will allow for. I think you can look, though, to other properties of what we've done. And I can say, you know, the Walnut Street Apartments, we've had community garden space at those apartment buildings, at Deer Path Apartments out in East Lansing. We've hosted community gardens at our Bailey Community Center. We've partnered with the City of East Lansing and the redevelopment of the Bailey Community Park right next door that hosts community garden space. So certainly those are areas that are not new to the housing partnership in areas that we've supported in the past. But once funding secured, we're able to make those agreements much more firm.
And then my last question has to do with, there was concern in the past from the neighbors that border the property and making sure that there was adequate fencing and things like that because of the proximity. Could you address that?
Sure. And those are great conversations that, you know, when the project, when we're hopeful to receive successful funding application from the state in this coming summer, you know, one of the very first things we take in partnership with our selected architect is a community development and a community involvement, where we bring in neighbors, not just to live directly adjacent, but neighbors in the surrounding area, whether that's the Baker Neighborhood or Rio Town Commercial Association as well, and the planning and design of ultimately what the exterior of the building would look like. And certainly fencing and other security aspects of not only our property for our sake, but also those who live adjacent would be addressed. And I can say, you know, this isn't the first of the investment we've made on that property. When we took over ownership three years ago, there was an entry-exit way that shot off onto Teal Avenue, just behind the property off of Mount Hope. We, in partnership with hearing from the neighbors, closed off that access route. We worked with planning and development, went through zoning and created an independent parcel. I can say, as of today, we've successfully built a three-bedroom, two-bath house on that property, right there on Teal Avenue. And we have accepted an offer for a new family who's going to be hopefully closing here in the next three weeks and be moving into that home. And so I think that goes to show that the neighbors have been supportive of our efforts to secure the building as it currently stands, but are hopeful for our successful award and funding to offer even more of a separation and sense of security from their houses in partnership with the apartments adjacent.
Thank you, Raleigh, for your information and answer and taking the time to answer these questions. I appreciate it.
Of course, anytime.
Thank you, Mr. Van Fossen. Really appreciate you being here, answering our questions. I'll just say, I, for one, am very excited about this, watching the saga that is the Walter French Building for many, many years here in Lansing. I'm glad to see some sort of resolution on the horizon and looking forward to it. So Councilmember Spitzley, floor is yours. I think you've made a motion, is that correct? Mr. Clerk, we have a motion in front of us.
Yes, we do.
I do, yes, we do. Yes, I do.
Very good. All right, well, seeing no further discussion from the council, let's have a vote on this ordinance for passage.
Okay. Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
We have 8-0. Motion passes, ordinance passes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Clerk.
Do you want to do immediate effect or is this a zoning, so we?
We don't need immediate effect on zoning.
Yeah.
As far as I know.
Okay. Then we're next on to consent agenda.
Mr. Vice President.
Sure. I'm sorry, I am, yeah. On tonight's consent agenda, we have a tribute and recognition of Greater Lansing Area Holiday Commission Martin Luther King Jr. Celebration. We have a tribute and recognition of the City Human Relations and Community Services Martin Luther King Jr. Memorial Observance. We have a resolution to extend the Declaration of State of Emergency regarding COVID-19. And we have a confirmation of an appointment. This is from Mr. Thomas Muth Jr. as a member of the Economic Development Corporation Tax Increment Finance Authority and Lansing Brownfield Redevelopment Authority Board of Directors. And that would be for a term to expire February 28, 2021. With that said, I'd move the consent agenda.
Very good. The consent agenda has been properly moved. Is the, would the clerk please call the roll?
Okay. Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
I have a quick question, and that's on the confirmation. So we are passing an appointment for one month?
Let me look at that resolution.
Um. Uh-oh.
Let's pull that off the consent agenda and then-
Yes, can that be pulled off? Thank you.
So if you could start the vote over on the revised consent agenda.
But I think he, but I do think that he's fulfilling-
A partial term.
A partial term, but we'll confirm.
Okay. So we're pulling that, and our consent agenda is two tributes and the extension of the gracious day emergency. I'll start over with Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
The motion passes 8-0, and we'll look at that resolution and bring it back.
Yeah, we'll put it at item 14, Mr. Clerk, please.
Okay. Then we're to resolutions for action.
Sure. Mr. Vice President.
Yeah, sure. I'm still looking in the package to try to pull that resolution up. This deals with the Elected Officers Compensation Commission in setting the first meeting for the 2021 session. We've talked about this in committee of the whole. This particular body is a body that establishes salaries for all of Lansing's elected leaders. Their decision is binding unless by resolution the city council rejects the increase by a supermajority vote. Per ordinance, we, as the city council, must designate the first meeting of the commission in odd numbered years. So the first meeting being held must be held, sorry, before March 1st, and the commission must not meet on more than 15 days in a final decision. Regarding elected leaders, salaries must be made within 45 days of that first meeting. The resolution for consideration before us would establish February 9th as the first meeting. That said, it has been brought to my attention, I'm pulling up the email right now, that per the ordinance, we do have to, on the resolution or as part of the resolution, we have to identify the meeting location. That was changed to Zoom, which it should have been. But we also are supposed to actually establish a meeting time. So I would propose amending the resolution on the floor for a starting time to be set at noon. Does that make sense, Councilmember Spatafor?
Yes, that makes sense. So you're going to say it's a 12 o'clock?
12 o'clock, February, or yes, noon at February 9th.
February 9th, and in the city, Zoom will be the-
Via Zoom, yes.
All right. Is there any discussion on the revised resolution? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Let me just put that edit in here. After that, one moment. Okay. What you have, after what you have passed. Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Motion pass 8-0.
All right, we are on to the next one. Mr. Vice President.
Yeah, so this is budget authorization allowing Lansing Entertainment and Public Facilities Authority, or LEPFA, to move funds appropriate in the fiscal year 2021 budget from the golf subsidy to the general fund subsidy as necessary to sustain LEPFA operations during the COVID-19 pandemic. We did have Scott Keith in from LEPFA into our committee of the whole. He talked a lot about, you know, the potential due to COVID-19 of needing to move money from one account essentially to another. They are going to, according to Scott Keith, endeavor to absolutely, you know, work to not have to make that transfer, but they want to ensure that they have the ability should a need arise. The money, we talked a little bit about that, the money would be paid back, paid back, sorry, should a transfer occur. We were told as part of the cow process that they would work to, you know, pay it back rather quickly. As part of the resolution, you'll see some of the language, LEPFA will be required to notify the finance director of the amount of the transfer. Should a transfer become necessary, and that LEPFA must also provide written explanation of why the transfer is necessary to sustain LEPFA operations. This resolution does only apply to fiscal year 2021. If future transfers are necessary due to the pandemic, they would actually have to come back before council. We would have to pass another resolution to allow for that. So again, this simply gives LEPFA a little bit of flexibility should a transfer be absolutely necessary. So that being said, I would move the resolution.
That is a proper motion. We have a question from Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't have a question as I did get additional information. I did vote no on the resolution earlier today, but I am prepared to support the resolution based on additional information that I received. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Spitzley. Excuse me. Are there any other questions? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
The mouse and pass 8-0.
Thank you very much. Next item, Mr. Vice President.
Sir, this resolution deals with a waiver of employment requirements for the appointment of Delisa Fontaine as the Director of the Department of Neighborhoods and Citizen Engagement. Just a little bit of background here, Andy Crawford, the former Director of the Department of Neighborhoods and Citizen Engagement, delivered appointment with the city at the close of last year. The mayor in turn appointed Delisa Fontaine as the new Director of this department. And the position calls for a bachelor's degree. Ms. Fontaine does not possess a bachelor's degree. And so the mayor has asked us to waive these requirements, which is allowed by ordinance in order for Ms. Fontaine to fill the role as Director on a permanent basis. Just a little bit of background on Ms. Fontaine before we consider the waiver of requirements. She does currently serve as a neighborhood resource coordinator for the department and is the mayor's community outreach coordinator, which is the position she took over when Marilyn Plummer retired. She has worked very closely with our neighborhoods and civic organizations over the past six years in their respective roles. And then prior to her work with the city, she did lead, I should say she was the lead coordinator for community organizer coordinator, sorry, for Pride, One Love Global and nurturing early on is necessary. She was a team member with the Burke to Work Initiative, and she did actually spend some time with the city as an income tax examiner, as well as a customer service specialist in the treasurer's office. I personally would like to take a little bit of time to express my support for this waiver. Delisa is incredible. Her service to our community, not just over the past six years, but, you know, but for a time well before that, has been, you know, really the boots-on-the-ground kind of variety. And we certainly appreciate her. She's resourceful, she's incredibly competent, she works very, very hard. I think she believes in our city, I think she believes in our neighborhoods, and I think she believes in our people candidly. I do, however, want to ask the administration, and I want it to be part of the record, to really consider the duties of this position and how they are best carried out. Candidly, I felt our prior directors spent far too much time outside of the city. We in the neighborhoods, I just, I don't think we saw her enough. And it's not a knock on her job performance, I think that is what was asked of her. That said, you know, the fact that this position is relatively new, it's a unique position, I think, you know, within our city government. It's accountable to our neighborhoods, that was the entire purpose, I think, of creating this new department, right, and this additional position within the mayor's cabinet. And I, for one, would really like to see Ms. Fontaine be able to more consistently maybe support our neighborhoods, again, kind of in a grassroots way and kind of a boots-on-the-ground way than maybe we saw with our last director, because I think she is uniquely positioned to do that work and has proven to be incredibly competent. So with that being said, I would move the resolution.
Okay, the resolution has been moved. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Absolutely, yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Positively, yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Enthusiastically, yes.
Motion passes 8-0.
Thank you very much, Mr. Clerk. Mr. Vice President, it's you again.
Sir, so we have, we actually have two resolutions before us. They both deal with collective bargaining agreements, sorry, and ratification. I'm going to speak to them kind of collectively, and then I'll move- Um, I'm gonna speak to them kind of collectively and then I'll move them, uh, individually. Uh, we have negotiated, uh, collective bargaining agreements, um, with two different units, uh, Teamsters Local Two Forty-three Supervisory Unit, as well as Teamsters Local Two Forty-three Clerical Technical Professional Unit. Um, it, both, let's see, both contracts, we cover the time period of February first, uh, through January thirty-first um, of two thousand and twenty-two, so February first of this year to January thirty-first of next year. It's, it's an eleven month, um, es- essentially contract extension. Um, both, uh, units did ratify the agreement, I think it was December fourteenth of last, um, year. Um, and as I said, uh, just a moment ago, it's essentially an extension of the contract. So there really is no change, uh, to the body of the contract. Um, there's no, you know, i- increase in wages, no change in benefits. Uh, so again, it's essentially an extension of what is already in place. So with that said, uh, I would first move the collective bargaining, bargaining agreement ratification of Teamsters Local Two Forty-three Supervisory Unit Contract.
Thank you very much. I do see one hand from Councilmember Garza.
Thank you, Council President. Now, I, I would personally like to thank these count, uh, these members of these bargaining units for essentially taking a concession, seeing how they are taking part of the work share program and extending their contract without a raise. I would also encourage council, the mayoral staff and cabinet, uh, to lead by example and also follow suit by not enacting raises this year. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, I would ask that the clerk please call the roll.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes, thank you.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Motion carries eight zero.
Next up is the, uh, this is the clerical one, Mr. Vice President.
Uh, yes, I would move the resolution, but this time this pertains to the ratification of Teamsters Local Two Forty-three Clerical Technical Professional Unit, uh, Contract.
Uh, there is a proper motion before us. Uh, any further assistance? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes, sorry, yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Motion carries eight zero.
All right, the motion has passed. The next item is, uh, Mr. Vice President, an interim contract.
Sorry, um, sure. So we have, uh, a council internar- internal, sorry, auditor contract, um, for Eric Brewer, um, that is before you for consideration. Candidly, folks, I should have given you an update, uh, from the Personnel Committee in terms of where we're at with our hiring of an internal auditor a long time ago. We've sat here, um, and we've thrown around a couple of jokes and, and things of that nature, but we really haven't gotten into, uh, the conversation of, of where we're at. Um, and, and for that, I apologize. Uh, four of the eight members who sit on that Personnel Committee, um, and we have, you know, we've been working for the better part of the last year, um, to, to fill the vacancy, um, of internal auditor. Um, what you may know, um, is that, you know, or I should say what you may not know is that it's been a, um, it's been a, a frustrating process and I, I think kind of a bizarre process. Um, you know, a lot of that's exacerbated by COVID nineteen, obviously. Uh, and the reason why, um, I want to just very quickly, President Spatafor, update, um, the body is that we are, although this isn't an unprecedented move, um, in terms of entering into a contract, uh, for, uh, temporary auditor services, um, it's, it's something that we don't typically engage in. Um, personal, you know, we, we really have done everything, uh, we can to secure, I think, a situation where we can, um, be provided with auditor services again over the, you know, better part of the past year. Um, we have considered an RFP process. You all know that. We discussed that, uh, as part of this body's deliberations, uh, and that was to hire a firm, uh, to fulfill the role of, uh, internal auditor and that would have been, um, last budget cycle. Um, there were a number of concerns, uh, that were brought forth, and so we, um, eventually kind of, you know, pivoted away from, uh, that effort. Um, we then worked with, uh, human resources. We, we worked with law. Um, certainly, uh, you know, I have to, uh, reference our office manager and the fantastic work she did. Um, and, and our, our hope was to, you know, get a posting up so we could hire permanently. We were able to do that, um, in mid-July. Uh, and that, uh, posting, I think, was, um, online for, for three weeks. We had hundreds of views, uh, and so we thought we had a ton of interest and we had very few applications. So as a result, uh, we extended the application deadline to August seventeenth. Um, we reached out to a staffing agency, uh, to see if they had temps that, that were qualified and that may be interested. Um, as part of that conversation, however, we found out, uh, that we would have to, uh, should we, um, ultimately cho- or should we have ultimately, uh, chosen to hire, uh, one of their, um, candidates? We'd, we would have had to pay, uh, to that staffing agency a twenty-five percent, uh, fee and what that means is twenty-five percent of the, uh, starting salary of that position. So of course, that did not work for us. Uh, we then reached out to the Board of Water and Light, uh, to inquire about their own internal, uh, internal auditor hiring process that they had engaged in, um, the prior year. Uh, they had a few applicants that they were really high on, um, but obviously they were only hiring for one position. Uh, so we then reached out to, to those individuals. Um, after really a tremendous amount of outreach, um, and work, we received enough interest to move forward. Uh, we had six applicants, um, we actually moved them through testing and of those six, I believe, two, uh, passed testing, we were able to bring them, uh, into, um, in, for interviews, I should say. We had those on September twenty-ninth and we had two, what I thought were just fantastic candidates. Uh, so we got back with them, um, and, uh, we had, you know, some additional questions. Uh, later that week, one actually pulled herself from consideration. So we, uh, at that point, um, let the other candidate know that the Personnel Committee was, um, supportive of her hiring, um, and, you know, we essentially needed to know if we could move forward with a resolution, um, uh, of hire, uh, and also, um, you know, we wanted to make sure we had, uh, an appropriate start date for her, uh, so that she could handle some things on her, on a, on her end and, um, actually repossessing herself locally. Um, however, the Friday, I think it was prior, uh, the Friday prior to that meeting, uh, she too let us know that she would be pursuing, um, other opportunities. So we were, you know, we basically found ourselves back at square one. Um, as Chair at that point, I worked with Judy Kaler, uh, who is our Chief Strategy Officer, as well as re- uh, human resources to look at, uh, the job description and job requirements. Uh, we made what I thought were some really common sense modifications, uh, with the, um, you know, essentially Personnel Committee was fine with us making those, so we made those. Uh, and after posting the job again, um, we did receive a few additional applications. Um, so we selected five, we moved them onto testing. Um, only three actually showed up to take the test and only two passed. And so we started interviews, um, in mid-December. We had one in mid-December, uh, right before, uh, winter break. Uh, and then we actually just had another interview, uh, last week. Um, we are, we believe, we may have found a candidate. We are, um, in that, um, place where we are asking some follow-up questions and things of that nature. Uh, we do believe that we will, uh, in Personnel be, uh, taking a look at a resolution very near, uh, in the very near future, I should say, uh, in terms of a permanent hire, but we have been down this road, um, you know, before. Uh, and so what we, you know, with, with essentially March coming up, with the recommended, uh, executive budget coming up, the fact that, uh, there are many job functions that are part of this, a job that have not been carried out, uh, over the better, you know, part of the past year. Um, we believe that it would be, um, uh, judicious, uh, to bring on, uh, somebody, um, at least temporarily and that somebody, uh, would be Eric Brewer. Um, in order to, you know, ensure that, um, we're, we're receiving these auditor services and even if we should hire full-time, um, that we have somebody that can really help, uh, the new internal auditor, um, you know, basically be caught up to speed and then also, um, work through what is at this point, um, a pretty, uh, large, uh, you know, kind of caseload, if you will. Um, so if you look at, uh, the resolution, uh, regarding the contract that we are proposing, uh, to enter into with Mr. Eric Brewer for, um, for temporary auditor services. Um, you'll see that we use basically, um, and actually I don't think the contract, I think it's the resolution, but the contract is not actually in, uh, your packet. What we did was we used, um, the contract we had, uh, with Jim Delain in the past. We use that as a template. Uh, and so per the contract, Eric's start date would be January nineteenth, uh, and that would extend it. I think it's through the end of the fiscal year, so it would be June thirtieth. However, the contract does state that the, um, that it can be terminated, uh, by either party with or without, uh, cause. I've had a lot of conversations with Eric. Eric understands, um, that if we are successful in hiring, um, an, an internal auditor, uh, during this time, uh, and that the auditor with his help, uh, you know, is, is able to be caught up to speed, uh, that we would look to end that contract, um, far before June thirtieth. Um, scope of work is the exact same scope of work, uh, that we had in Jim Delain's contract. Uh, and it includes essentially all of the tasks, uh, that Eric was charged with, uh, completing when he was actually with us as our full-time auditor. Uh, in terms of compensation, um, we settled, um, on his last, um, uh, rate of pay, which is forty-nine dollars and eighty cents per hour. Um, and we would pay that up to eight hours, forty hours a week. Um, and Eric would not be, uh, as a part-time, or I shouldn't say part-time, but as a contract employee, uh, he would not be entitled to fringe benefits, um, such as healthcare and retirement. Um, so again, um, that is the reason, uh, that we are bringing, uh, this resolution before the body. Um, and if there are any questions, I certainly can, uh, work to answer those, but I would move the resolution.
Hey, um, miss, thank you very much, Mr. Vice President. Uh, we have, uh, Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Mr. President. You guys had me at Eric Brewer. So Eric is a great guy, um, very, you know, I, he was hired, um, as internal auditor when I was on Personnel, um, very capable. I'm so pleased that he's coming back. Um, at least to help us for a little bit, and so I definitely will be supporting this resolution through this contract.
Thank you very much, um, Councilmember Spitzley. Seeing no other comments, I will ask for a motion on the, uh, con- the resolution approving the interim council, uh, the contract with Eric Brewer.
I did, I did make the motion, President Spatafor.
Yeah, I'm sorry, my bad. Uh, I'll ask for a vote, a roll call vote on that. And if one more person texts me about Act Four, yes, we're going back to it. I did accidentally skip over it. You all can settle down. Thank you for reading the agenda, though. Mr. Clerk.
Mr. Clerk is on mute.
Oh, yes.
You mean, I just don't say louder? It doesn't work?
If you just talk louder, it works sometimes.
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley. I, I saw her say the word yes, but I didn't hear it.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes, I'm so glad to have him back.
Motion passes eight zero.
All right, um, let me see here. Now we're gonna go back to item eleven, Mr. Clerk, Act Four, twenty twenty, and I will, uh, call on Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Mr. President. What we have before us is, um, a road vacation. Um, and not the kind of vacation that I need, but, um, a road vacation, um, it is, um, requested by RE Fund of Lansing. Um, they, um, own three of the parcels, um, surrounding, um, Rose Court, um, on the north and south sides of the, um, subject right of way. On November fourth of twenty twenty, the planning board reviewed the proposal, um, and approved it, um, as they determined the, the request can be granted without significant impact on, um, circulation network and the public pur- purposes of the right of way can be satisfied without the street remaining in public ownership. Um, specifically, um, they said that they approved the vacation of this road, provided that all utilities were protected through easements and relocations, um, which they will be. Um, I, I believe that there are some future plans for, um, redevelopment and additional housing in that area, um, which is the reason for the road vacation. And with that, I will, um, move the, uh, resolution.
All right, there is a proper motion before us. Um, I do not see any questions, so let's go ahead and, um, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Remember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Betts.
Yes.
The motion is carried eight zero.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Uh, Mr. Vice President, you have the gavel.
All right, President Spatafor, go ahead.
All right, so this item that, uh, now on the agenda is, uh, revisions to our council rules, amending rules for six seventeen. Uh, we talked about this a little, at length at Committee of the Whole and it's got to be here this evening, but basically, uh, what we will be doing under this, um, rule change, let me just make sure I pull it up so I get all of the details correct, um, is looking at changing the number of people that may serve on a committee from three to up to four. That will allow sort of the committees that have a lot of work going on in them to, to expand their membership so that folks can get a broader, um, experience on council. Um, also clarifies that you can still pass an item, um, with a, with a majority of two people, a quorum can be taken with two folks. Um, and then if a tie exists in a committee where there are even numbers, it automatically discharges the issue to the Committee of the Whole, um, as we've used in the past for, um, for member committees. The committee's structure has changed slightly, combining, uh, public service and general services into a city operations committee and eliminating the intergovernmental relations committee. Um, you know, Vice President Hussein talked a lot about how this allows for the committees that have a lot of work to have some more members and, and some things like that and probably a more even distribution of, um, council committee work. Um, it, it, it does eliminate, uh, two committees. We did add a new standing committee last year, the, um, Equity Diversity Inclusion Committee, um, but then we're eliminating here the Intergovernmental Relations Committee, which has been pointed out a number of times over many years and numerous council sessions, hasn't met every time, every year. And oftentimes when we do meet as joint bodies with some, a group, it's the full committee of the whole, not just the Intergovernmental Relations Committee. So in looking at the committee work to try and do the, the, the most efficient and the most, um, productive use of council committee structure, this is what I'm proposing. Um, it did pass the cow, so it's just gonna sit here this evening. So if there's anyone who wants to add discussion, I will yield the floor back to the, the Chair.
Do we have any discussion? I think the only thing, um, and, and I appreciate you referencing my early, earlier comments, just for anybody that, um, you know, wasn't part of the Committee of the Whole process. Um, and I think of, you know, to, to kind of, um, you know, bring to life, you know, maybe some of my earlier comments. I remember my first year on council. Um, and I was actually, my two committees, I was on IGR, um, which, you know, we never had a meeting, um, the Chair never called a meeting that year. Um, and then I was also on, um, I believe, Public Services and at that time, um, it was a, uh, call of the chair, uh, committee, and I think we maybe had seven, uh, meetings throughout the course of the year. So outside of Committee, Committee of the Whole and Council, um, I had some seven, uh, you know, committee commitments throughout the, the course of the year. Um, and that was really, I think, detrimental to me, um, as a, as a representative. I really don't think I grew much that year. Um, in terms of, um, committee process, vetting things really deep and deliberately, um, having those really important intentional conversations. Um, and so I really do believe by, um, you know, potentially, you know, not, well, it is potential at this point, but, um, you know, maybe, uh, eliminating the IGR, running those types of things through Committee of the Whole. Um, and then combining, uh, public services and general services into this new city operations. I think what you're gonna do, um, is have, you know, although you have one, when we look at the addition of the, uh, committee last year, um, uh, and then the elimination of two this year, so we, um, are actually losing, um, you know, a net of one. Um, I think what you're gonna, you're going to actually have is much more active boards, um, I'm s- I'm sorry, commissions, uh, commissions, committees. We, we use these, uh, terms far too often. Um, and then I think, you know, you're going to see, uh, city council, uh, members, uh, particularly new city council members, uh, really have an awesome opportunity, uh, to dive deep into the city's business. Um, really have that kind of broad, uh, experience and I'm really excited about that. So I appreciate, uh, President Spatafor, um, you, you know, kind of mulling this over and bringing this before the council. Thank you. Um, and I'm not seeing President Spatafor any additional conversation, um, so I would, um, happily send the gavel back your way.
Thank you very much, sir. Uh, before we move on to other stuff, we have to go back to what was item five on the consent agenda. It was item four on the consent agenda, but item five on the agenda is now a new item fourteen and I'll call on Councilmember Spitzley with the clarification on that issue.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. So the clarification is, it is, um, the date in the resolution is accurate. Um, the, um, the, um, it was, uh, Mr. Butler's, um, position seat, um, and, um, he, and so, um, Mr. Moose would be, um, filling in his seat. I guess my, my, his, um, his spot that's open, I guess my question would be, um, to, uh, the administration is he's got his hands up. All right, the mayor's got his hand up, so I'll let him do your thing.
Oh, thank you, uh, Councilwoman and Councilman. Uh, thank you to, to Deputy Clerk Brian Jackson, who, who got me the information I needed. So yeah, this was something we initiated several months ago. So yeah, this was something we initiated several months ago when James Butler passed away. Um it does expire February twenty eighth. It's a six year term, so if council wants to amend this to expire in twenty twenty seven, um I I'm supportive of that. Uh it's a six year term, so you know, Mister Mister Moose can um take office as soon as he swears in, so in essence, he'd get six years and a month, but I'm absolutely fine with that if that's council's prerogative. And if not, you can move this and we'll send him back for reappointment in a month. Um either one works for me. See, hand from Councilmember Hussein and then um Councilmember Wood.
Well, my.
Yeah, I. Oh, sorry, Councilmember Spitzley, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, and and before you um say anything, Councilmember Hussein, I just, if that's the case, I I I I just. I mean, I mean, I don't, I don't know if council should be amending the appointment. And so I would just assume um either um pull it and have you resubmit a new appointment for a six year. I think that makes it cleaner. I I'm not quite sure we as council should be amending that, the appointment resolution.
You can do that, too. I I'm happy to, I'm happy to have something sent to you for the next council meeting. If council wants to do that, Mister President, I would ask if you wanted to keep that on the floor when it comes, as I believe it's been vetted, but if that's the the preference of council, I'm happy to do that as well. I'm gonna, I'll let everyone else speak, but my preference would be, why don't we pass this and get the board up to full strength? And then if, when you reappoint him, we can, we can hold it on the floor because it's been vetted. Is, does anyone object to that? I think we have an appointment in front of us for a vacancy that we should probably fill.
Is there a meeting coming up that he needs to do that there needs to be before that time, before next week?
I don't know. Oh, you're you're right on that, that it is only two weeks from now. Anyway, I'll get to Councilmember Wood and then maybe someone can. There's a meeting coming up.
One, we've, we've had the mayor indicate that um he would make the appointment for the six years, so I don't see a problem with council amending the resolution and put in here based on the mayor's um confirmation that he, you know, to amend this. Um second, I did, the idea of just doing, you know, having two resolutions out there when we're talking about having him only for a month just does not make any sense. We we've got it before us now. I believe we, what we need to do is to finish this up and and have it taken care of, and that's my recommendation.
That a motion to amend the resolution?
Yes, a motion to amend the resolution.
All right, we have a motion to amend the resolution um for putting this expiration date of twenty twenty eight. No, twenty twenty seven, excuse me.
Correct.
Um and the minutes will reflect the rationale. Councilmember Wood, are you okay with that?
Yes, I am.
Okay, um Doe, I'm looking to you, Mister Clerk. Do we have to take a vote on the motion to amend? I believe we do.
Yeah, we would need to take a motion to amend and then the final passage.
All right, Mister Vice President, and then we'll we'll call a roll on the amendment and then go from there.
Sure, and so so I think this is actually, I'm, yeah, I'm glad that this was was pulled and we were able to receive this clarification. We had, um and I just wanted to let the um, you know, council and the public viewing know, uh we had Mister Thomas move into development and planning. And we really had an in-depth conversation. So when I talk about right earlier, some of that, some of that work that is done at the committee level, um I thought we had uh an excellent conversation. Um and it, you know, pertained to his candidacy, it pertained to uh some of his ideas for economic development, particularly outside um of the downtown area and historic core. Uh precipitating that conversation, at least for me, um was one of his responses and his applications. If you guys are uh looking at his application, he expressed an interest um in continuing to move uh the downtown area, Old Town and Rio Town forward. Um and that was one of the reasons he had actually applied for this particular body. Um and then the other piece that precipitated, I think, the conversation was um the rezon, uh the day before, uh that we had vetted as part of council. That was a rezon for uh fifty four hundred South Cedar. Um that was uh, you know, essentially uh to allow for another, yet another self-storage facility in South Lansing. Um and we talked really, you know, about the missed opportunities um there, right, to attach ourselves to the property uh owner at that particular location kind of early on, um to imagine, you know, really what that space could become together, uh to identify incentives um that could have been provided uh to potential developers, and then really collectively um looking to market that property uh for something that would have been, you know, truly uh catalytic, maybe even transformational for that area. Um it, again, what what a, what a missed opportunity uh, right, that was. Uh you look at a hundred and twenty thousand square feet of commercial space positioned on twelve acres of land. Um you're looking at, you know, one of the most uh traveled corridors in the tri-county region. So uh we talked a lot about in that meeting, we talked a lot about strategic uh planning, we talked about incentives. Uh we talked about programs available for small businesses and developers to locate, uh you know, their business and grow their business really throughout the city, not just in that uh kind of historic core. Um and we talked about, you know, LEAP uh candidly, and whether or not we were using um that entity correctly uh in order to grow our city. Um and I mentioned all of this uh because, you know, frankly, I I I was frustrated that day. Um and I think I was very direct uh in dealing with Mister Moose, um but I was blown away. I was blown away with uh the interview. I thought it was a fantastic interview. Um his, you know, his apparent desire, um you know, that he expressed as part of that meeting to uh, you know, to push LEAP and to push L E D C um in in our administration to get serious, um you know, about economic development really throughout the city. Um his his understanding of the programs in place, um you know, and the, and a lot of these programs, obviously, that he will be um involved with as part of this board uh to allow for, you know, such activities, such economic development to truly occur. Um you know, i- again, to me, it was um, it was, it was a really outstanding interview. So I know Mister Moose is is um watching. Um and I just wanted to let him know that I really appreciate um, you know, his his intention here. I really appreciate uh the work that he's gonna do um over the next, you know, it looks like maybe uh now six years as part of this body, and I certainly I look forward to working with him, so thank you.
Thank you, Mister Clerk. Please call the roll.
Okay, Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Bets.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Okay, so the amendment has been approved. You want me um, you want any more discussion on?
Well, I'm all set, as Renan said. Looks like it. So Mister Clerk, please call the roll.
Okay, for the final roll, and I've amended it to two thousand and twenty, what, twenty seven, correct? I'll make sure I got the number right.
Yes, twenty one plus six, twenty seven, yes.
Very good. All right, so then we have uh Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Bets.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Okay, that motion also carry eight zero.
Thank you very much, Mister Clerk.
Okay, uh that was the last of the action items, so we're on the speaker registration uh for public comment on city government-related matters. Do you want to speak on any items related to the city? Those wishing may comment, need to raise their hand by the end of the first speaker's comment. Raise hand function again is dial star nine, if you have a phone, raise hand icon in the chat room. You can press alt Y if you have a Windows computer, and click option Y if you have an Apple computer. So that we're now on to reports of city officer boards commission.
Okay, uh Mister Vice President, we need a motion, please.
Sure, I would move that all items be uh considered as read and full and that the proper referrals be made by you, President Spatafor.
All right, that is a proper motion. I'll just note, folks, that there are committee names on here. I'm gonna refer them. We have a resolution drafted that should the rules change go through, we'll move everything where it needs to go, just so you're aware. Um so uh with that, I would call the roll on the um motion, or the uh reports.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Bets.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
The motion carries eight zero.
Thank you very much.
So the first item is minutes of boards and commissions.
Place on file.
Comprehensive annual financial report fiscal year twenty twenty.
Committee of the Whole and the Internal Auditor.
Financial statements, Lansing building authority.
Committee of the Whole and the Internal Auditor.
Lansing Brownfield, re- authority.
Committee of the Whole and the Internal Auditor.
FIFA fiscal sta- statements.
Committee of the Whole and the Internal Auditor.
Tri-County Metro Narcotics Squad Financial Statements.
Uh Committee of the Whole and the Internal Auditor.
Onto letters to the mayor, the reappointed of Darlene Fancher.
Uh Committee of the Whole.
Repayment schedule, special assessment, capital project fund.
Ways and Means, the Internal Auditor.
Change of intent for parts of the Thompson Ram sale revenue.
Um Committee of the Whole and the Internal Auditor.
Reappointment of Gillian Dawson, at-large election officers' compensation commission.
Committee of the Whole.
Point is Samuel Brewster, second war member of the Board of Police Commission, term to expire December thirty first, twenty twenty four.
The Committee on Public Safety.
Point move, Thomas Morgan, at the at-large member of the Planning Board for term to expire September thirtieth, twenty twenty four.
Committee on Development and Planning.
Grant, application notification, here is victim of crime act grant.
The Ways and Means Committee and the Internal Auditor.
Collective bargaining agreement, Teamsters Local Two Thirty Four Clerical Technical Union.
Place on file.
And collective bargaining for Teamster Local Supervisors Unit.
Place on file.
Z nine twenty twenty uh for thirty five thirty four and thirty five thirty eight West Jolly Road, rezoning uh from C U P to D M one.
The Committee on Development and Planning.
S L U five uh twenty twenty, special lamp permit for seven two seven Sparrow Avenue to allow community center outreach facility in transitional housing shun- shelter in a residential district.
The Committee on Development and Planning.
And Communication for the Electric Control Commission, stock interests uh from Bed Bath and Beyond, Inc. As a result, a new stockholder, Cosplus World Market, will hold hundred percent membership in con- conjunction with license permit at four two seven Mall Court, Lansing.
Committee on General Services.
Okay, we have no excuse absence, so we are the remarks by councilmembers.
Uh any remarks from the council? All right, thank you very much, all. Um moving on.
Marks for the mayor.
Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I um, I just wanna thank, uh like Councilman Garza, I wanna thank the Teamsters for uh negotiating and working with the city. Um as Councilman Garza mentioned, um they have agreed to uh to keep their their wages and benefits flat for the year, uh recognizing the economic situation that we're in. Um so I do wanna publicly thank the Teamsters, and I'd say Councilman Garza threw it out there, but but I am also gonna be um returning to the city the automatic pay increase that I get. Um I'm not gonna take a pay increase if our employees aren't getting a pay increase, and and all of our cabinet directors also are not going to be getting a pay increase um to reflect, again, the economic situation and to show that we stand with our employees. So Councilman, thank you for raising that. Um thank you to Teamsters Two Forty Three. Uh we we appreciate it, uh recognizing this year's economic difficulties with with COVID. And um so I just wanted to announce that we'll, we'll be sending that out publicly, but I want a council to know that first, especially because Councilman Garza raised it, and I agree with him. Thank you. Thank you, Mister Mayor. Mister Clerk.
Okay, so we're on to public comments, city government-related matters. Those wishing to make comments, again, need to raise, use the raise a hand function. And after the first speaker is done speaking, uh that will be the end of people to be able to add onto the list. And our first speaker is Edmund Rushton, and the next speaker after that would be Ray Garcia. So Edmund.
Hello.
Hello, thanks for sticking around.
Of course, yeah, thank you uh for stopping me in the middle of that. I didn't wanna be wasting your time off. We were trying to discuss legislative matters. Um so, as I said, I'm calling in today in regards to now we are in two thousand twenty one, which makes us ninety years away from nineteen thirty one, and we have had to deal uh as a country, but of course, particularly in Lansing with the ever-looming threat of violent white supremacy in this country. And as we're getting closer uh to this upcoming weekend, where some very scary things could take place, I think it's important right now that we try to understand as much as possible what the threat of violent white supremacy has looked like in this country. And and where it has originated from and and how it's created and recreated over and over again. And the fact of the matter is that Lansing actually had to deal with a very strong presence of a violent white supremacist group uh in the nineteen twenties and thirties. This group was called the Black Legion, and they originated out of Ohio originally as a group of security officers to protect high-up K K K officers. Uh they developed a very strong presence in Michigan and in Lansing in the early, uh well, in the state of Michigan in nineteen, in the early nineteen thirties. Uh there, the Black Legion's membership in this state consistently hovered somewhere around thirty thousand members. And the bulk of those members were either in Detroit or in Lansing. These guys were very, very intense. They were, they were a quiet, secret society organization. The the K K K was um obviously a violent white supremacist group, but they had a a keen focus on public relations. They had a newspaper they would circulate, several newspapers, several pamphlets. Uh the Black Legion didn't do that. The Black Legion was always much more focused on outright violence and lethal combat. Uh they had plans to release uh cyanide gas canisters into a a Jewish temple in Detroit on Hanukkah nineteen thirty five. Thankfully, that plot was averted, and they had several other plots to murder um public officials who stood against uh white supremacy in both Detroit and Lansing. And they had a keen ability to stage deaths like suicide, uh to make their murders uh look, uh stage them to look like suicides, and this would involve often mourners. Now we must arrive at Earl Little, and I do see that there's thirty seconds left. Uh Earl Little was lynched by Black Legion in Lansing on September twenty eighth nineteen thirty one. And obviously, I can't come here today and say that you are all responsible uh uh and complicit in this because um this happened before you were born. But if September twenty eighth rolls around this year and there is not plans to build a statue or a memorial for Earl Little, this body will be responsible for letting the death go unrecognized for ninety years. So I'll be reaching out to all of you in the next few days um to talk about um commissioning perhaps a statue or a memorial to honor Earl Little.
Okay, next is uh Ray Garcia filed by Propaganda. And that concludes our public comment uh for people to sign in now. Uh no one else can sign in.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you, City Council. I'm sorry, I I didn't know when to to chime in. Um I'm new at the Zoom stuff. So I am um looking, I'm pleading my case for Z five twenty twenty for rezoning of northeast corner of East Miller and Orchard Court. Um I'm a lifetime resident here in Lansing. I um own many rentals here that I keep up extremely well. Uh been in business twenty-five years here in Lansing as a construction worker, um business owner, so I would like to build some quadruplexes, and I sent over um some documents to you guys showing what we're trying to do in the community. Um everything that I own is always kept up well. I've been a um landlord for approximately twenty-four years, more so in the last ten years. My properties are kept up well, my taxes are always paid, my properties are in pristine condition, including my business um on sixty eighty-one South M L K. I live about a mile and a half from this property that I would like to rezone. Um my business is about two and a half miles from that same property. And um I have, we we did um canvass the area for support. We also had um two people on Orchard Court um in the area that were not in um support of this, but we were able to turn um Marion Galley um by talking to her and telling her what what our our vision is for this. We're we're not um, we we wanna build something nice. I'm, I was born and raised in Lansing, and I live in the area still, and I'm gonna be here for forever, probably. Um so we are gonna be involved with the SCRAM program um with the police department so that we can make sure that the the things that have been going on in the area do not go on on this corner. Um it will be a new build, so you know, everything will be in good condition. And if anything were to go wrong, since I am in the business, things can be fixed quickly. Things don't sit around or, you know, Things don't sit around or, you know, I don't have any of the properties in shambles. They're always fixed and kept up well. But if you have any questions for me, I think I've talked myself, I've said everything I think I can. I didn't know if you guys had gotten all the documents I sent out. But if you have any questions, I'm more than happy to talk to you on phone at any time. I could send out my number so that any of you guys have any questions, I'd love to answer them and let you know what my vision is for this area.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I did want to mention a letter that we did have that submission in and also a letter for Randy Dykes about the about the Parks and Rec Plan as well. Do have that added to the public record. So X is Propagandie and then followed by that, the last speaker, Michael Vanya.
Hello, thank you again, hey, guys, for allowing me to speak. Three months ago, I believe it was, Andy Shore was in a back room deciding the fate of hundreds of retirees from the City of Lansing employees groups. And today, to come on here and jump on board with Garza, I I just, I don't, I don't understand where the outrage is. I don't understand how there is no outrage from you all and council. The people of the city have called in and have gotten tired of calling you anymore to express how they feel about these things. And this is why you have no public comment. I will not give up, you know, and we will continue to organize people as we need to to come on here and speak. But I think that they, you you guys should be concerned that nobody is contacting or coming on here to speak on these issues anymore. Primarily because they know nothing's going to get done. But to allow this this mayor to continue to come on here and rectify the damage and harm that he's done to this city through propaganda over and over again, is just, is just appalling to me. We can't forget history, as the speaker before me had stated, about the little father of Malcolm X being killed here and memorializing him in that in that situation. It's the same thing. We can't keep allowing this mayor to do damage to our communities. And then when the public pressure gets to be enough, he can turn it about face and fix these issues and then be applauded for saving and protecting us from what he caused and what he brought. How is this council not concerned with these things? The constant rhetoric and the constant propaganda of, you know, everything's fine, I'm doing great, the the job is well done. It's just beyond me that this council is not holding him responsible for the things that he's done and allowing him to use your all's platform for propaganda. It's beyond me, I I'm not, I'm really not understanding this process that you guys are going through. The people are losing faith in you all. I can tell you this from a fact because I talk to the people. I'm sure you all do too, but just know that the constituents you talk to are not the ones that I'm talking to. So there's a very unhappy group of people out here. Lights in downtown, that's the that's the big news. That was the big news of last week. I'm just really perturbed that this is the same conversation that we're going through. I mean, what are we doing about the issues that are seriously happening in the city? If not, then, you know, when are you guys going to listen? If you are listening and somebody and something's being done, tell us, we need to know. Closing down the city hall again for longer stretches of time is all just a way of not having to face us as a people. We're not given any chance to ask questions to this mayor or even you council members to find out what is going on in the city. And you're not addressing any of it on city council. This is a problem, a continuous problem that we're trying to get to the end, to the bottom of. I'll give the benefit of the doubt, you guys may be working on it, but what are you doing? We need to be speaking on these things on council immediately. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, have a good evening.
Okay, and our last speaker is Michael Vanya.
Good evening, council, thank you for your time. I received a notice that S L U four that twenty twenty would be voted on this evening. I'm just confirming that that actually will be the case.
I will confirm real quick, if that's not the case, we had a public hearing this evening that will go back to the Development and Planning Committee. And when that committee posts its next meeting, that will be on the agenda.
Okay, so that will, when the next meeting will be, what date?
That's to be determined yet. We have to get our, whereas, I'm sorry, I don't, we don't usually interact here, but we're at a new session, so we have no committees yet.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yes, you have a good evening.
You too.
Okay, that was our last speaker.
All right, with that, folks, it is eight fifty five and we are adjourned for the evening. We'll see you in two weeks. Well, see you on the twentieth for the special committee of the whole meeting, but I'll see you in two weeks for city council.